Call the June regular meeting of the Bryan City Schools Board of Education to order. If I could begin with the pledge to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Rob, if you could call the roll.
Emily Ewald.
Yes.
Cindy Taylor.
Yes.
Tom Lingby.
Here.
Brian Miller.
Here.
Glenn Newcom.
Here.
Thank you.
I should have before them a copy of the May regular meeting minutes. If there are any questions, I'm glad to entertain them, otherwise second motion to approve those.
Oh.
Tom?
Second.
Glenn?
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Not aware of any public participation this evening, so moving on to communications. And Syndra with the four county report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Business as usual at the school. Many building updates, improvements are happening, as well as new teacher hires. Same thing that we're used to doing. I do want to announce that there were forty-five students that signed up for summer school. The school is very happy about that. As well as sixty young students participated in the summer camp classes. They went over very well. And one last thing, the four county adult education director is proud to announce that over the last twelve month period, there have been over five thousand two hundred people take CPR and first aid courses between four counties location and their satellite locations. This is over nine hundred classes, which has helped many of them further their desire to take four counties paramedic courses, which there'll be a big announcement coming out about that partnering up again with pro medical healthcare systems really soon. So, that's my update.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome, thanks.
Rob, treasures report.
Okay, thank you. We'll look at the financial reports for the month ended May thirty-one. Our cash reconciliation balances at Farmers and Merchant State Bank total fifteen million one hundred seventy-four thousand two hundred twenty-one dollars. Outstanding checks and adjustments eighty thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. Investments at Star Ohio, four million fifteen thousand nine hundred nine dollars and sixty-four cents. At Morgan Stanley, twenty-five million eight hundred seventy-eight thousand eight hundred sixty-eight dollars. And at State Bank, three million two hundred thirty-nine thousand thirty-nine dollars. I believe that those numbers on Star Ohio and State Bank are switched around. I apologize for that error. I'll get that fixed. But the four millions at State Bank and the three point two millions at Star Ohio, I apologize for that. Just now noticed that. Our petty cash and change funds total seven thousand three hundred dollars. Total funds on hand, forty-eight million two hundred and thirty-four thousand three hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Of those funds, our general fund balance is twelve million eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. Our bond retirement fund, one million one hundred fifty-three thousand. Permanent improvement fund, two million three hundred thirty-eight thousand. Our building fund for locally funded initiatives sits at two million four hundred and seventy thousand. Our CFAC project local share, twenty-two million four hundred and thirteen thousand. And the state share, six million one hundred thirty-three thousand. Once again, our fund balance, forty-eight million two hundred thirty-four thousand three hundred and fifty-nine dollars at the end of May. On the SM two report, our revenues for the year are about a hundred and eighty thousand ahead of budget. Our expenditures are about seven hundred and twenty-four thousand below budget. So we have a positive variance at this time, about nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand. Looking at the financials today, we have completed our final payroll. We have a few more bills to pay, but we should end up with a surplus for this year somewhere. I'm thinking around nine hundred thousand to one million dollars. We did receive today from the state our catastrophic cost funding, which was about seventy-eight thousand dollars. Due to their tardiness on getting their systems put in place for us to enter that date, I did not anticipate that money coming in this fiscal year. They surprised me. So, I had that in next year's forecast, but it did come in this month. So, that's about eighty thousand dollars more than what I anticipated in revenue for this year because of that one line item. Any questions regarding those reports? Now we'll look at amended appropriations. Our appropriations at the end of May totaled forty-six million one hundred and seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars. Changes during the month, reduction in the general fund of two hundred and twenty-four thousand. Increases in special revenue funds of about twenty-five thousand. Increases our capital project funds of about two hundred and ninety-four thousand. Enterprise funds including concessions and uniform school supplies for an increase of about eighty-seven hundred dollars. And trustment agency funds increase of three thousand three hundred twenty-five dollars. Total increases during the month, one hundred and six thousand five hundred fifty-nine dollars. Any questions regarding the appropriations? The temporary appropriations, this, in June each year, we set up temporary appropriations so that they can be approved. So as we start the new fiscal year, we have temporary appropriations in place to handle the transition from one fiscal year to another. Our temporary appropriations we're asking you to pass tonight total twenty-four million seven hundred and thirty-five thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Of that, the general fund is twenty million nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Our special revenue funds, nine hundred and eighty-three thousand. Our debt service for bond retirement, one million eight hundred forty-four thousand. Capital projects, eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand. And enterprise funds, one hundred and twenty-six thousand. Agency funds, thirty thousand five hundred. For a total of twenty-four million seven hundred and thirty-five thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Any questions there? If not, the next item, we ask authorization to participate in all federal programs for the upcoming two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year, including all federal grants. We also ask the board authorization and permission to participate in the two thousand sixteen-seventeen federal lunch and breakfast programs, including free and reduced lunches, breakfast, and commodity programs. We ask the board's authorization to enter into a technical service agreement with Northern Buckeye Education Council for the exhibit. We ask authorization to accept the property liability auto insurance quote from Walters and Peck for the upcoming fiscal year, July one, two thousand sixteen through June thirty, two thousand seventeen. Authorization to renew our contract with School Messenger. Authorization to enter into software support contract with FileWave to handle our iPads management. We ask for your approval on the recommendation to accept a bid from Baker Schindler Contracting Company in the amount of one hundred and three thousand four hundred and five dollars for the fieldhouse parking lot expansion. It was just recently bid. That'll be the east parking lot down here. We received two bids and Baker Schindler was the low bidder. The file ours architect has made that recommendation to the board. We ask for your authorization to transfer the net difference between our rental income and operating expenses for the central education wing that we ran out to Fountain City Christian School. At the end of each fiscal year, we transfer that profit to the permanent improvement fund from our general fund. We, the next item is correction from last month. We ask for your approval to contract with Gillian and Groom to handle our Medicare cost drop in report audit for a two-year starting July one, two thousand fourteen through June thirty, two thousand sixteen. And to rescind the contract to Gillian and Groom that was approved last month for the period of July one, two thousand fifteen through two thousand seventeen. That, those dates on our contract last month were an error. We skipped one year, so we had to move backwards. The cost of that is nineteen hundred dollars per year. We also ask the board's authorization to begin compensation for the Bryan Education Association members for their two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year contracts on the payroll dated August twenty-six, two thousand sixteen. This request is being made to avoid interruption in payroll due to the September thirteenth, two thousand sixteen starting date of our new school year. Annual salary will be spread over twenty-six payrolls as per contract language. Eliminate the need to have a stoppage of pay for people, which we did not want to do. We'd like to recognize some donations. The class of nineteen sixty-four has donated over four thousand dollars to us to cover the cost of two new flag poles for our six to twelve building. These will be shorter poles that will be on each side of the American flag pole out there in our new building. Should be very, very nice when it's all done. We thank the class of nineteen sixty-four for those donations. We'd like to recognize Shirley Bard. She made a donation of a baby grand piano to our music program valued about twenty-five hundred dollars. Like to thank Laura Rhodey for donating the old, the sixteen inch viola valued at one thousand fifty-two dollars to the orchestra program. The Mary Reigner Memorial Fund has donated money to our band choir and orchestra programs. And the Bryan Elementary PTO has donated seven thousand six hundred dollars to the school district for use of the next year. We have one then and now certificate for approval. This is project management consultants for three thousand five hundred dollars. They facilitated one of our construction GMP meetings and the invoice came in late. The invoice was predated and we received it late, so the purchase order date was later than the invoice date. So we have to have a then and now approval on that. And then from the addendum, we ask your approval of a contract with School Point website contract for the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year. Stop at that point for the motion.
Rob, are you going to pull out that Baker Schindler thing as a separate?
We can do that, Tom, if we need to.
All right.
Okay, we'll do that. We'll pull that out and a separate motion on that. Let's handle all the other ones first, then we'll do that. If that's okay, Mr. Commander.
I'm fired. Are there any questions from any other board members?
Someone with the corrections is noted.
Thanks, Emily.
I'll second.
Syndra?
Tom?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Okay, we'll do the Baker Schindler, please.
Salute. Thank you, Glenn. Thank you, Emily.
Brian?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Well, I'll second.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Rob.
Next, we have change order number twenty for the building project. That is a change order that adds our music soundproof rooms. This was an item that we waited to decide it on late due to funding and budget reasons. That, that change order is just over one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. We ask for the board's approval on that item.
Also move to accept that change order.
Thanks, Tom.
That was seconded by Tom.
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And Brian? And finally, one last contract with Technology Source for the pre-K to five building project for the exhibit.
Second.
Emily with the first, Glenn with the second, thank you.
Thank you. Emily?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Thank you. I believe I've concluded my report, thank you.
Business, construction update, Diana.
Okay, good evening and welcome. As always, I'll kind of give an overview, but if Tom or Glenn or Rob would like to add to the conversation. The last, we're now meeting bi-monthly for our core group. And so we last held our meeting on Thursday, June eleventh. At that point, the highlights, talking about the city road project expansion in coordination with our project for the turn-in lanes. It looks like that the same contractor is going to get that bid. And so, we're going to work with the city on that. And that's going to be a great thing to have the same contractor doing both sides. So, we're excited about that, but timing is going to remain a key issue for that part of the project. The parking lot expansion, which the board just approved tonight, is not an overall part of the construction project, but it's going to happen at the same time. And we're going to work with, again, the city not to interrupt their project as we work on widening the road. The landscape bid intends to hydro seed our six to twelve land, and that'll happen in late August or early September. The bid dates for the pre-K to five renovation project were extended to last Friday. Those were opened and we're hosting post-bid meetings for some qualifications and follow-up. And then we'll be ready to announce the winners of those bids. Curbs and sidewalks, if you go through or go by the site, you can see that curbs and sidewalks are starting to be put in. They're making good progress and the paving of the lots is set to begin sometime this week. The terrazzo flooring continues to work. They're a little bit behind only because of cure time with the concrete base of the floor, but they're still projecting to be done on time. By the end of this month, the academic wings should be completely finished, ready for their pre-punch list by the end of July. And we should have a temporary occupancy permit by early August. The gym floor has started and will continue through the end of the month. The bleachers arrive sometime this week and should be finished by the end of July. And then again, as I mentioned earlier, the bids for the pre-K to five were extended to last Friday. So, we are working closely. We meet again this Thursday for an update. So we'll be getting updates every two weeks. They've made substantial progress. Still have a ways to go, but we've made great progress in the past month. Also want to take time to announce this evening that we are working on setting up the auction at Lincoln. And that is going to be held on Saturday, September seventeenth. So for our community members and interested parties that want to take a look at the equipment, the furniture, the loose furnishings that we have for sale, mark that date, Saturday, September seventeenth. We'll be hosting that at the Lincoln Elementary site. So, any other questions that the board has or Tom or Glenn, if you'd like to add anything to that, to that list?
I think the only thing I can add, and you alluded to the fact that, you know, curbs and sidewalks are going in. I believe they're going to start paving tomorrow on the front lot, the front parking lot, the south parking lot, and the drive that comes across the front of the building here. Additional, the rest of the balance of the curb are going to go in later this week. And then sidewalks will be following up directly behind those in conjunction with those curbs that have walks behind them. I think the paving on the west lot is scheduled towards the end of the month here, which isn't very far off. And the last lot to be paved will be the east lot where all the job site trailers are. That's sometime in August, early August. You're right, I mean, I walked through the building over the weekend looking at it quite extensively because there wasn't really too many people working at that time in the building. They have made a significant amount of progress. And a lot of the building, especially the academic portion, is truly approaching, you know, the final stages of completion. I mean, it looks at this point in time a little unfinished because, you know, the carpet isn't down, but they're in the process of starting to place carpets, starting to place tiles. So, it's just an issue of, you know, putting those surfaces down and cleaning them up. And it's ready for occupancy, you know, once the state inspection has been handled and all the issues that they will have to deal with. It, you know, it's making progress. These things always get to be somewhat of a fire drill at the end because you've got so many things that are coming to fruition at the same time. So it just sort of like managed chaos in a way.
I haven't been in for a few weeks, are they getting like that, what do you call this, casework?
Yeah, the casework is, they made significant, well, the ceilings, there are areas that are totally done in terms of the casework's installed, the ceilings are in. I know Wallace has been working two twelve-hour shifts just terminating wires, you know, putting on switch plate covers, outlet covers, you know, just all of the detail work, it just takes time. It's tedious and it just takes time. A couple of weeks ago, I was in and there were a couple of rooms that were just jam-packed with casework. And being in the building this past weekend, all that casework had been distributed to the rooms and installed. I believe that I, talking with one of the superintendents or one of the project, one of the trade superintendents, that they had two loads of casework coming for the music room areas tomorrow and Wednesday. So, it, there is a lot of stuff happening. And the best way I can describe it is just sort of managed chaos.
I think you summarized it really well, Tom. I guess the thing that always takes my, or I always think about whenever I walk through the building. It's just the sheer size. It's like, we talk about finishing rooms off, you know, when you have to hang a door. Well, we have hundreds of doors to hang, I mean, and that takes time. Finishing off the details of every room, we have so many rooms in the building. It's just hard to kind of grasp the amount of time that it takes to finish that off. But yet, every time you go in the building, you see progress being made. And they keep assuring us that it's on track, it's on schedule. And so, I'm not a contractor and I'm just going on what they tell me. And so, if, if you feel comfortable, Tom, I feel comfortable.
I was, I was sharing with Diana today, I guess over the course of all the years I've been involved in construction, I think there's about about ten buildings that I've been either involved in or around. And as I told her, I says, every one of them has come down to this just giant fire drill at the end of the process in which there's a lot of things happening. And everybody's trying to get it done in a very, very short timeframe. And it's just part of, it's the nature of the beast. It's just, it just, you know, why it is with school buildings, other than the fact that they usually have the completion date tied with the start of school or some break in the school year. So you're always up against a hard day. And it seems like every one of them ends up being a real fire drill at the end, just getting everything done. But they've always got them done. So, I have all the confidence in the world, we will be done too.
Okay, great. Any other questions from board members? Okay, excellent. We'll move in then to superintendent recommendations and administrative recommendations. First off, you have an exhibit that's a master agreement with side effects for electronic scoring equipment. So, one of the things in the new building is a scorer's table for the new gymnasium. We'll still be using our current scorer's table at the old high school for junior high events. And then transfer that to the renovated pre-K to five building for junior high events in the future. So, this agreement will allow us to work with side effects to provide that scoreboard and generate at some point, once it's paid off, some revenue for the district through advertising sales. This is similar to the same type of contract we signed for the scoreboard out here at the football field. Next, you have an exhibit that's a utility easement with the city of Bryan. So in preparation of the road expansion that we talked about, there is one telephone pole that has to be moved. And in order for that to happen, the city has to, we have to approve this utility easement with the city. And that is a telephone pole that is located here at the corner of Center Street and Fountain Grove Drive or Township Road. Next, we have the MOU with Defiance College to host interns and practicum students for next year. Approval of the Northwest Ohio Juvenile Detention Center, our educational agreement. This is an annual item for students that are placed in the detention center on either a temporary or more full-time basis. And then finally, approval of overnight trip requests for summer for girls' basketball, girls' tennis, swimming, and volleyball. And I'll entertain any questions that the board may have.
I move to accept the administrative recommendations for the month. Okay, thank you, Glenn.
I'll second.
Tom?
I'll second.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily? Syndra?
She was too quiet. She wanted, that's all right, I like them. Motion second, everybody on board.
Next up.
Under commendations, we would like to recognize the top ten percent of the class of two thousand sixteen, along with the fourth quarter all eight honor roll. As we mentioned a little bit last month, we had state, state track and field finalist Parker Herrer tied for fifteenth in the boys' pole vault. Alex Dolan in the hundred meter finals. Jake Howsh, Corbin Garza, David Rommel, and Alex Dolan in the four by one hundred placed eighth with two new school records. Evan Smith, John Garza, Logan Deal, and Jake Howsh in the four by four hundred placed ninth with three new school records. So congratulations to them. At the middle school, we recognize our top ten percent for the grades seven and eight, as well as our all eight honor roll for fourth quarter for grades six, seven, and eight. We like to recognize at grades four and five, the Ices Top Dogs for May for the character trait of enthusiasm. We have the fourth grade bard essay winners, Sam Harold, Gracie Jenkins, Tabitha Taylor, Allison Bashaw, Mara Smith, and Kaia Davis. And then also at Lincoln and Washington, our character trait awards for enthusiasm, along with our PE Gold Slip winners, our PE Gold Slip winners of the year, and our PE Character Bear Classroom, as long with our Sportsmanship Award Classroom. So we'd like to recognize all of those students for their tremendous accomplishments in the last month of school.
Ready?
I'm ready.
I'll make a motion to accept the superintendent's.
Thank you, Syndra.
I'll second.
Glenn with the second. Tom?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Next, under personnel recommendations, we have two resignations. Stacy Nossinger, elementary three to five art teacher effective July tenth. Stacy and her husband are moving and locating out of state. So we wish her the best in her new career, okay? Doug Vilman is resigning his supplemental contracts as head boys' basketball coach and middle school football coach. We'd like to offer a one-year limited teaching contract to Audra Manriquez as elementary three to five art teacher. Audra has six years' experience on the bachelor's level and the A-one salary schedule. Audra is returning to us after a one-year hiatus at another local district. And we are excited to have her back on our staff. On your addendum, I'd like to refer to your addendum for a moment for the recommendation of a one-year limited teaching contract for Brandon Fisher. As a grade five intervention teacher, Brandon has six years' experience on the masters plus twenty level on the A-one salary schedule. And also to offer Brandon the supplemental contract of head boys' basketball coach. Going back to the regular agenda, under high school summer school teacher Beth Klingeman for physical education. This was to correct an error from last month. Beth was needed to teach this summer due to increased numbers. And we had approved the wrong staff name, so I apologize for that. High school summer step ahead teacher Doug Shimmler for the math afternoon session. Again, we had a sharp increase in our number of students enrolled in that program. So we'd like to recommend Doug to assist with the larger numbers. Transfer of classified personnel beginning with the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year. This list is our food service reorganization. Again, we've been working throughout this year to reorganize into our pre-K to five and our six to twelve staffing in preparation for the transitions. And so you see the overall reassignments for starting next year in our food service program. There will be a reduction in force of a classified worker for the sixteen-seventeen school year. And that person affected is Amanda Blank in, in the food service lunchroom worker category. Like to transfer certificated personnel beginning with the sixteen-seventeen school year Emily Nagy to grade four intervention. Extended time contracts for the sixteen-seventeen school year. The guidance counselors at ten days. Rich Will with band camp and band programming over the summer at ten days. Ann Bible, Amber Fransdorf, and Jamie Morris are tech support at five days. And Christine All and Rebecca Kuhn are speech pathologists, speech therapists at three days. Supplemental contracts for our head volleyball, assistant high school volleyball, and middle school volleyball coaches. And then Matt Smith as our middle school football coach to replace Mr. Vilman. Betsy Smith as weight room coordinator at eleven percent. Betsy Zubor is fall play director. Heather Teagarden as assistant fall play director. Lisa Heslop is foreign language club advisor. And volunteers for the sixteen-seventeen school year Laura Knight and Patricia Vreeland Kuhn for the vocal music program. And I'll entertain any questions that you may have regarding the personnel recommendations.
I'm willing to accept the motion. Emily, thank you.
I'll second it.
Tom, thank you.
Brian?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, we have a recommendation to purchase textbooks. These come at the recommendation of our Director of Federal Grants. Chad Bassett has worked with our teaching staff to review and examine different textbooks and what they bring to our curriculum.